Good evening and thank you for attending the Pasco City Council Workshop Meeting. The city thanks you for attending and being a part of our city government. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table and detailed agenda packets is available on the City of Pasco's website, which is www.pasco/wa.gov. City council meetings are televised live on Spectrum Cable Channel 191 in Pasco and Richland and are streamed on the city's Facebook page and YouTube channel. If you have mobile devices with you tonight, we ask that you mute or turn it off so that the workshop will not be interrupted. And with that housekeeping out of the way, um, uh, let's see. Why don't we go with the roll call?
Alvarado.
Present.
Barajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
And Serrano.
Here.
Wonderful. If you would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, we'll go to item number three on the agenda, and it's a verbal report from council members. Anybody have anything they want to report for this week?
I do. So I attended the Visit Tri-Cities meeting. It was fun, it was great. They gave a budget report amongst other things. There was a lot of people present and one of them Carl Adrian, I believe his name is, he is retiring, and one of the things that they achieved was a destination marketing accreditation program through Destinations International. So that was pretty cool, kind of a difficult certification to get. And then the other thing was that USA Today featured Hanford as one of the, um, uh, top 10 sites to visit in around the country because of its accessibility. Um, a lot of the other sites are not, uh, open for visitors and so just thought that's kind of a cool thing for us to have access to.
Thank you. Anybody else here? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say that I actually took the train down to Portland over the weekend. Left, uh, got on the, on the train at 5:35 in the morning on a, on Saturday, which is, was quite the, uh, quite the early trip. Beautiful trip, but it started off in a, in a facility that's well-maintained, um, and that looks really nice, was very comfortable. Um, you know, I've, I've been to the multimodal station, um, a few times, um, and been in the surrounding area, but you know, just, just going through there, you know, um, just, just taking a look at the facility and the, and the service that we got there was really great. It's a good asset for our community and, and the trip was, that was, was very pleasant as well. Some beautiful views. If you haven't had a chance to go, it is indeed a, um, a two-level train and in the dining car, you have nearly, um, nearly full view ahead of you. So it's, it was, it was a lot of fun. I got some wonderful pictures and so, thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, thank you. Um, I also attended the going-away thing for Carl Adrian on Wednesday, and then they also had a reception at, uh, the facility there on Thursday and just well-attended. And also like to say that Carl Di is the new chief executor of Tri-Tech, so look forward to great things.
Yep. All right, thank you. Hi, uh, good, Ms. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to do a quick report, uh, that I did meet this morning with a small delegation of senators that came from Mexico. They are, uh, working along with United Farm Workers, uh, to support the, uh, community or agricultural community here in Pasco, uh, within the Tri-Cities. Um, and so Mr. Dave Zabel was there with me as well. Um, but just wanted to report that there were four senators that came in, uh, Senator from Chihuahua, Sonora, um, oh, and I believe that's all I remember. Um, but anyways, um, it looks like they're looking for a partnership, uh, within the rest of the United Farm Worker, um, unions, um, within Oregon and Washington. Um, so again, just looking for support. And last but not least, we can't forget the Pasco City Employee Reception this past Friday. Um, great reception, uh, congratulations to all that received your awards and everyone that did not, especially, uh, since it's because of you that the city runs, uh, so smoothly. Again, congratulations to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barajas. Uh, I attended most of the meetings, or you know, Carl Adrian, I, I can't just let up the opportunity to say how, uh, big of an advocate he was for this, uh, for this region, for this community, and, uh, also attended his retirement reception. And, uh, it's just amazing when somebody's been here for a long time and all the things that they, uh, participate in and helping, helping us improve our communities. Uh, he, he was, he was a star, one of the stars of this, of this place. So appreciate his efforts and then the rest of the activities that you guys were able to attend, so appreciate that. Well, if there's nothing else, uh, we'll go on in the agenda, we'll get right to business here, and item four, A, the Pasco School District Update on the 2019 Capital Facilities Plan. And Mr. White, do you want to make an introduction?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and Council. The School District's Capital Facility Plan, uh, as probably Council recalls, was considered both in 2018 and 2019. And at that time, Council had requested evidence that the district's strategy of using SEPA to, uh, uh, receive, uh, appropriate school impact fees was working. And so far, it has been working. And as noted in the Agenda Report, the district would prefer to use the latest iteration of their capital plan, which was prepared, uh, in August of 2019, as, uh, the document that would satisfy the terms of the inter-local agreement between the district and the city regarding the biennial update for years 2020 and 2021. That's a requirement of the inter-local agreement so that the, uh, Capital Facility Plan accurately reflects the requested school impact fee that the district has developed. So I believe, uh, the district is ready for their presentation, and, um, I'll turn it over to Ms. Denise Stifarm, and she'll, uh, introduce herself and her firm.
Good evening, thank you. It's nice to be back here again. I'm Denise Stifarm, I'm with Pacifica Law Group and working with the Pasco School District for the last several years on updating their Capital Facilities Plan and implementing the school impact fee and school mitigation program. I'm joined tonight by several folks from the school district, um, sitting back there behind me, the superintendent, as well as the board president and the assistant superintendent are here tonight. So as, as needed, they can join me, but what I thought I would do is give you a refresher on what we talked about before. Um, I know this is something you don't think about all the time, so, um, we'll go through what we've gone through before with some updates, um, following, uh, the last time in June 2018 when we were here. So again, the purpose of the Capital Facilities Plan really is to establish the district's eligibility for school impact fees and provide the basis for what you see in terms of an impact fee calculation. In order to collect school impact fees, the district itself can't do it, it needs to rely on its jurisdictions, in this case, the city and the county. And in order to collect them under the Growth Management Act, the district's Capital Facilities Plan must be adopted as an element of the jurisdiction's comprehensive plan. The Pasco School District first, uh, uh, came to you in early, in the early 2011, 12 time period to discuss school impact fees, and then in 2012, the city adopted that first Capital Facilities Plan, as well as a school impact fee ordinance. That ordinance requires the district to come back every two years at least with an updated plan, and the district has been doing that on its schedule with the most recent, uh, request coming in the 2018 time period with the 2018 update. We came to you in 2018, we came back, um, about a year, a little bit more than a, actually, it was June 2019, so not quite a year, um, with that 2018 plan request. And at that time, the city asked for a couple of things, and at the same time, the district decided, since we're at this point, we have updated information, let's go ahead and adopt a 2019 update to the Capital Facilities Plan. So that is what is before you this evening. The Capital Facilities Plan, uh, meets the requirements of the Growth Management Act in that it provides an inventory of the district's facilities based upon the adopted level of service. So the Board of Directors adopts a level of service for its schools, K5, 6, 8, 9, 12. And then what it does is it looks at enrollment projections over the six-year planning period. So we look at the horizon, in this case, through 2024 school year, to determine what is the growth, and based upon that growth, what, if any, new inventory does the district need in terms of providing capacity to serve growth? When that's identified, the district identifies what plans it has for addressing that need, how it's going to pay for it, and then uses that for purposes of the school impact fee calculation. And I just want to pause to, to reiterate that the district does not automatically qualify for school impact fees under the state law. It needs to show that it's growing, and then it also needs to show that it has a capacity need related to that growth, and then finally, that it has a plan in the six-year planning period for addressing that capital facilities need. So those three components are the fundamentals, um, for purposes of even moving forward. The Pasco School District has been growing for some time, it continues to grow. The number that's in this PowerPoint says that it's grown by more than 2,100 students since 2012. Um, October 2019 enrollment had an additional 400-plus students enrolled in the district, so that number continues to increase every year, and it's ticking along right around that 400 students per year number. Um, growth is occurring at all grade levels. The district, fortunately, in 2017 had the benefit of the district's voters approving a bond measure to help address growth-related needs, as well as some other needs that the district had identified in its existing facilities, but most importantly, in terms of capacity projects to serve growth, two new elementaries, elementary 13 and 14, a new middle school, an expansion of space at Stevens Middle School, and then some funding for, um, land acquisition and some portable adjustments are within that pool. The district is also at this time planning for a future bond, and that would include a new comprehensive high school to serve growth-related needs in the district. So projects, um, at all three grade levels, and that reflects the capacity need at all three grade levels based upon that continuing growth. So meeting those fundamental three requirements to even establish that they're eligible to request school impact fees, we then look to what does a school impact fee actually consist of? And so fundamentals, the school impact fee is a one-time charge, it's only charged to new residential development, so new single-family homes, new multifamily projects, each multifamily dwelling unit. It can only be used to fund capacity projects that are included in a Capital Facilities Plan adopted by the jurisdiction. So the 2016 plan that is currently adopted by your city for the school district includes new capacity at the elementary level and at the high school level, because that is what the district was planning at that time. Since then, of course, we know that there are projects planned at not only the elementary level, but the middle school level, planned and funded, and now the district is looking for that new high school capacity. Impact fees importantly can't be the sole source of funding, and frankly, they tend to be a small source of the overall funding with the bond measure being the primary source. State school construction dollars are another source. They can't, they must be spent within 10 years of collection, and they are developed based upon a formula that is based upon the requirements in state law, and then also reflects a formula that has been adopted throughout the state of Washington by those jurisdictions who are collecting school impact fees. So it is designed to be legally compliant, and it has been tested for that purpose. Um, in your case, your formula is adopted as a part of your code, and that is what's reflected in the district's Capital Facilities Plan. So the, the formula looks like this, and it's, um, something that, I don't blame you if your eyes cross when you look at it unless you really like math and spreadsheets, and I know some people do. Um, it, it is one that, um, is somewhat of a challenge to go through and make simple, but I, I have tried to do my best to break it down into components. So I'm gonna go back here to this page and just identify what goes into that formula. The first, um, component are the identified growth-related capacity projects that are funded in the plan. So in this case, we have the elementary projects, two new elementary schools, and the middle school projects, a new middle school and middle school addition. And so those are our two growth-related projects. Very simplistically, we identify through the formula what it costs per seat to build, um, those new projects. Once we have a cost per seat, we then multiply it further by a factor known as the student generation rate. And the student generation rate is based upon actual data from the previous six years of new residential development within the district. The district hires a consultant, that consultant matches new, new building permits within that six-year lookback to actual student addresses in the district system, and that tells us on average how many students are residing in new single-family homes and new multifamily homes. We treat them different because they are different products. So once we have that, we apply that rate to the cost per seat to get to a cost per dwelling unit for the new capacity. Then at that point, what we do is we apply credits, one credit for any state match funds, dollars from the state school construction assistance program that the district expects to receive towards that project. And then very importantly, we apply a tax credit, and that credit reflects the anticipated taxes that a new homeowner will pay towards the school construction bond that is going to fund those projects. And that's important because we want to make sure that someone's not paying twice for the same improvement. They're getting a credit for the taxes that they will be paying going forward towards the school construction bond. Then we get to the very end, and per the city ordinance, there is a 25% discount applied. So we have a final sum, and then we automatically decrease it by 25%. And then in addition, the district has chosen to apply a discretionary discount in order to keep the fee level with what's been in place since 2012. So they're keeping that fee consistent across the years, but that requires an additional discount. So that's basically what you see here with the yellow highlight being what's called the recommended fee amount that the district is asking the city to adopt and collect on its behalf. Um, and again, keeping it consistent with what's been in place, the fee for single-family homes is 4,700 per unit, for multifamily homes, 4,525 per unit. One thing I did want to point out is that when the district updated the 2019 plan, it updated those student generation rates, and what it's finding is that in terms of multifamily homes and single-family units, they're getting just about the same number of students out of both product types. So they're generating very much alike in terms of what they're producing, and that's one of the reasons why you see those fees being very, um, level with one another. So again, um, we're back here with the most recent update to the Capital Facilities Plan and, uh, requesting adoption. One of the questions that the city council had in 2018, excuse me, June of 2019 when we were here is what the district was doing with regard to efforts to collect in the unincorporated area if, um, of the district in Franklin County where there is not a school impact fee ordinance. The other direction that we heard from the city council at that time was to think about how to have an expression from the district of the need to collect equitably throughout the district, so this will provide an update on both of those points. And so the first, um, I'll start with the, the direction we heard. The district adopted in August of 2019, along with the Capital Facilities Plan, Board Policy 9223, just to express, um, in written form what has been their policy and to incorporate what is in the Capital Facilities Plan, that they, um, will seek school mitigation from all new residential development within the district, using all available legal means to do that. They recognize in that policy that the City of Pasco does have a school impact fee ordinance, and they recognize also that they will continue as they've been doing since 2012 to request that Franklin County consider a school impact fee ordinance. And just to, to boil down the difference between what I'm referring to as school impact fees versus mitigation fees. So impact fees are authorized under the Growth Management Act, they are what you have in your city through your adopted school impact fee ordinance, and that mechanism allows collection from all new residential developments. So it's just an automatic collected-at-building permit expectation. Mitigation fees are collected and, or excuse me, are authorized pursuant to the State Environmental Policy Act and also through the State Subdivision Act. And this is a mechanism that predated the Growth Management Act and used to be the only form that schools had for purposes of providing or requesting mitigation for impacts to school infrastructure. This is what is currently in place in Franklin County and the process that the district uses in terms of going through new development proposals that are subject to SEPA review to actually comment and request school mitigation. So the district has been doing this for several years. Efforts prior to 2017 weren't successful. In 2017, the district reached out to me and I, uh, worked with them to develop some new procedures for purposes of requesting those SEPA mitigation fees, and since that time, we've had several come through and have actually had some fees come through the process as well, most recently. I do want to underscore that not all residential development within Franklin County is subject to SEPA review. There are exemption levels, and so the district only has an avenue where a project is subject to SEPA and they're able to provide a comment and where it, the cases where they need to either reserve or appeal that SEPA determination in order to work with the developer to get to what's called a school mitigation agreement. So that's what, that's what the district has been doing, but I do again want to underscore that it doesn't capture all residential dwelling units, because some of those will come in under that SEPA exempt level, and there won't be an avenue for doing that.
Quick question, what is that level? How many units?
Uh, currently, it is 20 single-family units.
So anything that's 19?
Yeah. Anything below is, is not subject to SEPA review. There is some mechanism through the State Subdivision Act, it's a little, it's not as straightforward, but that is a fallback to try to use, but, but right now, the SEPA exemption is 20.
Can you pause there for a second? Did I understand that you said there are kind of three elements, you had to have standing or the ability to comment, and, and then you had to comment?
Yes.
And that had to be some, probably some type of proportional impact to the school district?
Yes, we, and we use the Capital Facilities Plan to demonstrate the school district's capacity need, so we reference the capacity need, we identify the specific schools that students from that development will be attending in order to then further demonstrate that those schools don't have adequate capacity and need school mitigation. Um, the other thing that I just wanted to mention, and it's in your staff report, is that the city has been helpful with the SEPA mitigation process and enforcing those agreements with, uh, the additional support through the city's water connection requirements and basically making sure that the school mitigation has been paid pursuant to the school mitigation agreement that the district has entered into with developers. And the school mitigation agreement is recorded on title, it's legally enforceable, it provides notice to any subsequent purchaser of that property that a school mitigation fee will be due when a building permit is pulled. So there's, there is a safeguard there, but the city's water connection charge provides an additional safeguard. And that's the end, but I'm going to pause if there are any other questions.
Mr. Alvarado?
Yeah, do you have, uh, some, just, kind of, frank questions? I don't know if you, you would have the data on this, I don't know if this would be something that's, uh, uh, we would have to get from county, but, uh, do we know, like, uh, let's say in a calendar year, how many developments, uh, would go up, uh, both that would require SEPA and, and not? Do, does a school have that information?
Um, we, we don't, I don't believe we have that specific information. The district does get SEPA notices from the county, so for, to the extent a project is subject to SEPA, those notices will come to the district. Obviously, if they're not subject to SEPA, we don't, and right now, I, I don't think anyone here has that underlying information.
And that'd be pretty, just a, a good, a good data point for us.
Sure. Yeah, we can definitely get it for you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a, a few questions. Um, one second, wait, make sure I can get all. Um, so just to, just to distill, a lot, there's a lot of information there, all deeply technical and, um, financial information there. So just to make sure I understand, um, so impact fees only affect new construction? Is that correct?
New residential construction.
Yes, new residential construction, yes. Something that would add, potentially add, uh, additional students.
Right.
Right. Um, school bonds apply to every property in the district?
Correct.
Again, is it applied only to, is it only applied to residential or is that?
No, but it also applies to commercial.
Okay, thank you. Um, and if I understand correctly, the action in front of us isn't to raise these fees or adjust these fees in any fashion, it is just asking to, to update the current plans so that the, the impact fees can be applied to newly identified school construction that needs to be taken into consideration?
That, that is absolutely correct. It, it, it provides the district with, uh, spending flexibility for all of the capacity projects within, um, the 2019 Capital Facilities Plan, but keeping it at that same level fee.
Excellent. I do have a question, Mr. White. So one of the questions, I, I was thinking when we were talking about the SEPA thresholds and the use of the city, uh, the hookups of city water, one of those mechanisms to ensure compliance with that. Is there any sort of mechanism in which regardless of SEPA, the water connections could be used to implement an impact fee for the schools?
Yes, they, they are being used to do that, as, as well as other appropriate and applicable city impact fees and city development regulations.
So regardless of size of project?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, I guess my, my comment will be, um, I believe that growth should pay for growth, um, and that's what impact fees do. I don't love impact fees, um, the effect of housing affordability, um, and I'm, I'm not a fan of that, but I've yet to hear, um, a better option than, than impact fees for this. And so I just, I guess I just don't feel like it's fair to have all of our community, including those who don't need new, new schools or updated schools, to be paying for new construction, so, um, I appreciate it and supportive, thank you.
Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. You mentioned that these, they essentially expire in 10 years. Do you know if the district currently has bank capacity?
I don't believe so. Uh, I know that the district, since the program started in 2012, has, um, collected about 12 million, but I believe with the 2017 bond projects, those are being, they were eligible for the pre-planning activities related to those bond projects, and I think that they probably have been, um, utilized going forward. I'm just glancing back, see if anyone tells me no, and I'm not seeing it.
That's fine, that, that makes sense. You know, I was just, I, I was thinking of that article that I read, um, this past weekend, I believe that indicated there were some issues with some funding from Arkham and I believe a second middle school, and I was just curious if there'd be any flow into, um, if there was bank capacity that could be used for some of those types of projects. It's unfortunate the state's trying to tie the hands of our districts, but here we are. Unfortunately, we're on the, the east side.
Mr. Roach?
I was, out of curiosity, wanting to know, uh, the cost of education for one academic school year for one student. What does it cost?
Um, cost for both, uh, operations and capacity?
Sure.
I'm gonna look back to my resources. Looks like we'll have to get that information to you.
Okay. And then a question about, I saw asterisks next to the high school. Um, what is the projected cost for the, the building of the new high school?
I'm just gonna check, I believe there is an anticipated cost identified, um, yes. The, um, estimated cost, um, is 135 million. Um, that's an estimated cost for bond planning purposes. I don't know if there is an updated cost.
Thank you.
And that's 135 million for a 2,000-student high school, just to give you a sense of the size.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I would like to have some input in this. I, you know, ever since we first got this impact visa on the ground, it's, it wasn't, you know, to me, the, the most favorable way to go was just the only thing available that we could use at the time and knowing the need for growth and, uh, the need for the school district to be able to, um, to bring in, uh, the type of growth that we're, that we're experiencing, I mean, it just, it, it's just a way that, there was no other mechanism in place that we could use. So I agree with Mr. Maloney on that aspect. Uh, the, the issue that we've had from the beginning is that it needs to be equitable and it needs to be fair to everybody. And I just, you know, I, I'm a, I'm a supporter of our schools. As a city, it is imperative that we have a school district that is doing what our school district is doing, and, um, and, you know, with all this, the, the upgrades and the STEM and the, and all the wonderful things, the dual languages, all the things that are happening in our, in our school district, it's a direct impact to It's a direct impact to bringing um. Businesses here to our community that are gonna be paying good jobs and 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 more than anything, it's for the kids. And I just. I just, I just, I just wanted to be equitable, be fair with everybody and from the beginning. Um, it was always oppressed upon us that that would be that way. And it still hasn't come come to that fruition. So I would just encourage you one more time to please. Do everything possible to make sure it's fair for everybody, everybody who uses and and is um. Benefiting from our school district that they be uh, treated fairly throughout the throughout, you know, the whole district. And so in that, you know, with that said, I I'm more than happy to support and to approve and uh, just just plan and. And move forward, but I would encourage one more time, please. Uh, do what you can to make sure that this is something that everybody puts a little bit of effort into to uh, to continue. Um, and I could go on and on about the reasons uh, why I think it's unfair and the reasons why I think it's necessary, but. The reality is, is that we're in a pinch. We're trusting in the administrative uh, group of the school district to ensure that. You're running a lean operation and you're doing the best you can. And I think you have the confidence of the people that that is being done right now. And we are a model school district for the, you know, for the country. And I wanna continue that. And again, it's important for us as a city to make sure we have that. So that we can keep thriving the way we are. So I would encourage everybody that's involved. Uh, that makes decisions to to please. Let's, let's sit, you know, if we have to sit around the table again and hash this out, let's do it to make it fair for everybody. So that everybody's participating. Thank you. So with that said, any other questions from the council?
Yeah, just I think I I I am very very curious about those numbers and I don't know if that would come from the school district or or perhaps I could request them from our staff or. Looking to myself, I don't.
Sure, and and that's the number of of how many development, how many units are falling below that CIPA exemption level?
Or even how many CIPA, um, um.
How many are CIPA eligible?
Either, yeah.
Okay.
I don't have either.
Yep, we'll work on that. We we can work with staff together, city staff together on that.
Uh, Mister Zabel, do you have a?
I I just wanted to be, and I I appreciate the council's uh, discussion about the fee itself and the equity of it across the district. But uh, what what we're anticipating is this, the plan itself would be back on. The agenda for next week for council adoption. So that and the adoption of the plan. Doesn't change or modify the um, the impact fees. It simply incorporates the. Twenty nineteen updated the uh, Pasco School District's Capital Facilities Plan into the City of Pasco's Comprehensive Land Use Plan. So it's like, like adopt, same same thing we do when we adopt our sewer comprehensive plan or water comprehensive plans. In this case, the school did the work on the actual planning uh, and community members as part of that effort, I I understand. So just wanted to make council aware that 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 would be the action we contemplate next week, so.
Right. Alright, thank you, Mister Zabel. Thank you for your presentation. Um, and if there's no further questions, then we'll look forward to having that on the agenda for next week. Alright, we'll move on to the next, uh, next item on the agenda. Code Amendment Planned Unit Developments. Uh, Mister Rick White, you wanna make a?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor and Council, and I'll introduce uh, Jacob Gonzalez, the city's senior planner. He's uh, been very hard at work on a very detailed amendment to our Planned Unit Development Ordinance, which is a. Tool the city offers for um, a developer to propose a project that may. In fact, be a good project, but may not in fact meet appropriate development codes, but the end result would still be. Something the city would enjoy having. So uh, Jacob, I'll turn it over to you and uh. Uh, we do have a PowerPoint um, presentation. Uh, so that you can see some examples of planned unit developments both here in Pasco and and elsewhere.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Happy to be here again talking about planned unit developments. And before we get started with. Uh, the brief presentation, just wanted to provide some additional information with. Regards to housing and growth here in the region, specifically Pasco. Um, obviously, everyone's aware of how fast we're growing, an additional forty-eight thousand people in the next nineteen years. Um, that year twenty thirty-eight keeps getting closer and closer to us. Um, additionally, the staff conducted a land capacity analysis last fall. That identified that in our urban growth area, seventy-seven percent of the land is designated as low-density residential. Of the vacant land that remains for medium, mixed, and high density, only five percent exist on the vacant side. And on the underutilized size, underutilized uh, lots uh, available for residential development in the urban growth area, ninety-four acres. Um, are available and underutilized uh, in terms of the land capacity analysis means that that lot is. Uh, large enough to house additional units under today's current zoning standards. Um, so I just wanted to provide some information as to why uh, staff has identified the Plan Unit Development Ordinance as kind of the next iteration to updating. Our municipal code in terms of zoning. Um, obviously, the PUD is an opportunity to provide some flexibility and creativity in our zoning standards. To allow for uh, developments to occur. Um, they do this uh, in purpose to allow some housing diversity of uh, variety. And also with the consideration of transportation access and patterns, uh, open space, utilities, and infrastructure. Uh, currently, uh, in the municipal code under twenty-five one forty. Uh, I mean, the planned unit developments are permitted in any residential uh, zoning uh, district. Um, they're also allowed to uh, be a combination of residential and commercial uses. Obviously, um, it stated in the code and. That rightfully will stay that no combination of industrial and and residential uh, uses would occur. Seems kind of logical, but you always need to put that in the code just to enforce that. Um, and one of the main benefits of the PUD uh, for housing developers is that there's a lot of flexibility. Allowed with regards to design in terms of minimum lot size. Uh, setbacks, density, open space, bonus criteria. There's, there's quite a bit of flexibility offered to folks who would like to use that. And uh, there's a few slides here that show uh, some examples of what we have available here. We actually don't have many. Examples here in Pasco. Uh, the Sun Willows Neighborhood, I believe, late eighties, early nineties is technically the only PUD that was developed under the existing. Uh, ordinance as it exists today, hundred thirty-five acres. Obviously, it's got the open space quite covered. Uh, with a golf course, um, average lot size of about seventy-five hundred square feet. Pathways, community gathering spaces. This is a very large PUDs just south, southeast of the Tri-Cities Airport on Twentieth Avenue. Another example would be Ivy Glades located um, uh, south of Sylvester along the Columbia River. Uh, another decent-sized uh, PUD, hundred and seventy-seven housing units. Average lot size slightly larger to uh, represent the low-density residential development patterns of Riverview and West Pasco. Obviously, access to the Columbia River, uh, pathways, trails. That's pretty good use of of open space. Um, I I think all the community members and those that interact with that neighborhood, I would probably agree that's a great example of a PUD here in the, in the city. Across the river in Kennewick, Hanson Park, another large PUD. Obviously, you can see some open space. And pathways and trails available for folks. And I believe this is also a public park, so it's quite a bit of amenities offered. Uh, in uh, in this particular development. And and really, that there's not many much else. To be quite honest with PUD examples that we could find readily available for research. Going across uh, Interstate ninety to the Puget Sound, this is Bothell, Washington, north of Lake Washington, south of Interstate four or five. This is a PUD that's a much smaller, uh, much smaller footprint, which is a little bit more uh, of what we're trying to utilize. With the proposed revisions here. This is slightly under five acres. Uh, in between each unit, these are condominiums. Um, they got some very large gathering spaces that that act as yards and shared spaces between the neighborhood. Um, they opted for a tennis court. I'm not sure how much it's used. You can see there on the the bottom right corner. Uh, that's the uh, the tennis court uh, facility from the street side. And these are examples of much smaller infill uh, PUD opportunities. Uh, that are starting to become more and more popular, especially as states are taking on the housing uh, battle uh, with the middle housing. Uh, term is what's being thrown around, but it's just the diversity of housing styles. Uh, the one on the left is from Bend, Oregon, actually won a Master Plan Community Award a few years ago. Uh, the one right in the middle is from Kirkland, Washington, so along the shores of Lake Washington. And that third uh, drawing is a sketch, actually looks kind of similar to where I live in today. Um, is another example of a PUD, uh, smaller footprint, community garden, gathering spaces right in the middle, accessible. But fits within a smaller footprint, uh, which isn't allowed today um, under the PUD. So it's, it's interesting and it's. Challenging. Right now, the PUD exists to allow for design flexibility and to promote creativity, but right from the get-go, we we require ten acres. And if we refer back to some of the statistics from the land capacity in urban growth area, numbers, ten acres is hard to find in the city of Pasco. Uh, there's also the additional requirement of thirty-five percent of that gross area must be dedicated for open space. Uh, private streets are permitted in the PUDs, but there are no standards or criteria for use of them. So obviously, that represents a challenge for public works, staff, and the crew itself. Uh, the density bonus of twenty percent is permitted, but there's not really a lot of criteria uh, for how you actually meet that. And the same with the open space, um, open space obviously is encouraged thirty-five percent, but there's. Uh, a staff at research, our code and other codes, ours is pretty open as to what. Uh, actually qualified as open space. We've heard of some pretty extreme examples uh, where balconies would count as open space. Obviously, that doesn't really. Meet the intent of an open space uh, provision in a code. So uh, what we've have here in front of you is some of the major significant changes to the PUD ordinance. And what we've done is aligned them with the land use classifications of our comprehensive plan. And one of the reasons we wanted to do this was to not only make sure that we could, uh, if we were to decrease. The permitted site area for a PUD, that it made sense within its underlying. The vision of the comprehensive plan and that it also met the intent of the densities. Uh, or a range of densities as identified within the comprehensive. So when we start with the low-density residential. Obviously, that's a significant decrease from ten acres to two acres. And then you, uh, with the addition of the six, uh, minimum of six dwelling units an acre. Uh, that, that requires that anybody who would like to utilize a PUD and go, uh. My computer is about to restart. Let me snooze this. Um, hopefully that works. Uh, low-density residential is uh, the current range of the comprehensive plan is two to five acres. So obviously, this is one above. But when we're trying to promote flexibility. And when we uh, look back at the data and understand that most of our underutilized land is in low-density residential uh, land uses. That this would be an appropriate uh, appropriate manner in which to utilize a a slightly larger minimum density. For the low-density residential, mixed, high uh, densities, along with the mixed residential, commercial zoning districts. Uh, I'm sorry, land uses all have been reduced to no requirement. And there's a caveat to that. Um, along with the minimum densities that are associated with the land, uh, land, uh, land use comprehensive plan. So for example. Uh, right now, the mixed residential land use, it's six to twenty units. That's what's permitted under that zone. High density is twenty-one and plus. And the mixed residential commercial is five to twenty-nine. So we try to be realistic with what we would like to see and permit. With the applying the minimum densities. We actually didn't see that in too many other codes. Um, and maybe that won't be an issue for us, but we just wanted to enforce that if a PUD is to be developed in Pasco, that it at least meets the intents. Of the underlying comprehensive plan land use so that we can kind of keep moving forward together with that. Some additional uh, revisions are based on transportation, and this is a big, a big one here. PUDs are great, but we don't want them to disrupt the transportation system that either exists today, that is planned, proposed, or. Expected to be on the ground uh, over the next twenty to thirty years. And so what, what that means is that the language that's been added. Um, scattered throughout the ordinance reinforces that uh, transportation connectivity is a priority. For any development. Obviously, that meets goals and policies of our comprehensive plan, council interests. Uh, helps us plan better together with our regional transportation partners, with Ben Franklin Transit and the Council of Governments. Um, so that that's uh, something that we, we definitely are are happy to add in there. In addition, we also provided clear criteria for private streets, and it's not identified here. It's rather lengthy, rather lengthy, but after discussions with our public work staff. Uh, we, we have identified some standards. Um, if a developer would like to utilize a private street, it would uh, require some justification that they wouldn't be able to meet. The minimum density with with a public street. And at that point, you may be able to move forward with the private street, assuming that you can justify your, your, your lot layout requires it. The private street itself would have to meet our local access standards. So there's some safety in there in terms of the private street. Not only has a right, right of way to. Accommodate parking, sidewalks, curb gutter, lights, your, your standard development pattern. Uh, but also that the construction of the street itself wouldn't deteriorate uh, quicker than normal. And that's one of the issues we have. With some of our private streets and PUDs today. The bonus density uh, still remains the same at twenty percent, but now we've actually had, we are now add criteria. To meet the bonus criteria and we've linked that with the open space and amenities portion of the PUD. So we're uh. Seeking a reduction from thirty-five percent to fifteen percent. Um, thirty-five percent was was rather large. The only other jurisdiction I could find regionally with thirty-five percent was Kalodis. Uh, the city of Kennewick is at fifteen percent, Vancouver, ten percent, Spokane, just up three ninety-five, ten percent. So we feel fifteen percent is is a reasonable number for the city of Pasco. Um, obviously, the more open space and access we have to it, the better off our community members are, um, which is tied back into the bonus density. Um, guest parking, there was no language about guest parking or consideration of guest parking in the existing language. We've now gone back and added that with a minimum maximum to allow a developer an option to choose depending on the location over there at. What makes sense in terms of additional guest parking. This is in addition to what's already required. Of our z- of our housing units here in the city of Pasco.
Mister Gonzalez, quick question. Uh, so I I was reading through here and it appears that there's one additional. Um, per ten and with a maximum of one per six. Is that right? Is that, is that, how does that compare to the other, the other areas, the other places?
Kennewick's uh, got, uses a percentage. Um, and uh, rather than overcomplicate our code, I I thought a straightforward range. Uh, you can pick in the middle or you can go on the high side or the low side. Uh, would would be a little bit easier for us, not only to administer our staff, but also for the developers. We want to make it easier for folks to. To build uh, housing here in the city, as long as it's done with with certain parameters around them. Um, this uh, one is similar to what is in existence in Bothell, Washington.
Okay. And the reason I I bring this up is because it seems like when I go to the bigger cities to go visit friends, family. Uh, and everybody's limited to one parking spot and then everybody goes and parks on the street somewhere. Uh, which is disrupting the traffic and and so forth. I just wanted it. Uh, to see what your thoughts were on, you know, I I would like to see at least one per six, the the maximum allowed, but. But, you know, I I think this is fair, so I just wanted to see what your thoughts were on that.
Yeah, and and absolutely. And and as much as we want to be uh, moving forward towards, you know, a city of well over a hundred thousand people in the next twenty years. Uh, we, we don't want to be too uh, prescriptive with our, uh, something like a parking requirement to the point where we've reduced the lot size. Or I'm sorry, the site requirement, reduce the open space requirement and then tacked on, but you must have a lot of parking. And that kind of takes away from the whole point of having opportunities to build housing and affordable housing at that as well. So we thought the range was appropriate for us.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh, just kind of wrapping up here as as staff has has talked to this item, obviously, there's been quite a bit of discussion with this. It was first brought to. The Planning Commission in twenty seventeen with open space and then brought back in late twenty eighteen when we. Uh, began working on the shared tree frontage ordinance that council adopted in the fall. Um, in addition to what staffs identified for uh, for uh, changes to the code here. Uh, we're also, would like to seek feedback and guidance from council regarding maximum densities. Uh, that's not uh, something we see in the PUD. Doesn't exist in ours, uh, currently. It doesn't exist in many others, uh, currently. Um, either, but it is, if it's a item of concern, we can obviously do some additional research to find out. Uh, what are the best practices for maximum densities in a planned unit development? And uh, one that we should also be uh, cognizant about is PUD development in the uh, urban growth area that is not. Currently ours. Um, this is a great tool, we believe, for infill opportunity. Obviously, north of the city limits, infill doesn't, there's no need for infill. It's brand-new development. And so there might be some. Considerations to slightly alter this so that we have kind of a scalable, relevant development pattern that works great for. South of Burns Road and one that works great for north of Burns Road. And staff could obviously do some research into what that looks like, if there's variable uh, site area requirements in different jurisdictions as well. Especially those that are growing as fast as we are.
Perfect. Any questions? Mister Bruce?
I just wanted to say thank you, Jacob. I've been working on this with city staff as a planning commissioner, and this has been something that's uh. Really useful as we've talked about, just even the last couple of weeks about uh, increasing variety of housing. Uh, in our city is that's one of our needs that we have. So thank you for the time you've put into this.
Thank you, Mister Serrano.
Thank you. Um, to the point that you ma- you ended on, um, right sizing it to possibly kind of what's. Thank you. Um, to the point that you ma- you ended on um right sizing it to possibly kind of what's currently county, but eventually will be ours more than likely, and then that, which is south of Burns Road. Have you been approached by any developers on any of that raw land as far as looking for something like this? Uh, or or is this just so fresh that we're not marketing that, if you will?
A a little bit of both. Um, since I I've been at the city, and I think recently, well, we've only got two that exist in the city limits. So obviously, I think one of the uh the challenges with the existing code was the site requirement of ten acres in general. Um, north of the city limits, an area that that is future urban growth area expansion, I I think uh we haven't seen anything come in in terms of a PUD out there. Uh, but uh I I think this is also an opportunity for us to really reinforce that this is an opportunity for creativity and flexibility. Uh, obviously, with some parameters that make sense for our community, but it is, it gives us another opportunity for that.
Thank you. Um, and one point to, I guess, staff, uh, well, any of you. Uh, on page eight of my electronic PDF, it's on page five. I think there's a typo on subsection six. Right after the green part struck out thirty-five and it says ten, but from what I'm hearing, that's actually fifteen percent.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we capture that and anything else that we need to, because I assume this is coming to us probably next week. So if we need anything else, just make sure we get that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Uh, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for uh for this and for all the work you're doing to try to get us in position for the the people that continue to want to be in our wonderful city. Um, so I've got um two questions for you. Um. The first question I have is um, o- over the last couple of years, one thing we've we've been looking for is making sure that um as we in, as we change our development standards, we're looking to the development community and make sure that we're getting getting their feedback before we have something in front of this to approve. Um, what has been the response from the development community in terms of 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 this sort of approach?
Uh, well, and and this one in general, we haven't heard much yet. Hopefully, there's excitement about it, but uh with the shared tree frontages that was adopted less than six months ago, I think we've got three. Three in the pipeline, uh, more on the way. And so obviously, that was a a useful and valuable asset for us to add as a toolkit to our zoning uh requirement, or zoning uh designations for the city. I I think anything that we can do that uh allows some permits for flexibility uh is a good thing for us. Obviously, we want to put some standards so that things are put together safe safely and with some thought into it, uh, especially how that will impact us five, ten, twenty years down the road. Uh, I think this one, we're probably a little ahead of it, but that's a good thing.
Great. Thank you for uh for speaking to that, because that is something that I'm very interested in understanding a little better um on all these, uh, changes we're looking at making. Um, the other question I have um really ties into to what you said there about standards. My biggest concern is that something like this being broadly applied to all of our residential zoning is something that could be used as a mechanism to maybe circumvent some of our existing standards. Um, and I'd hate to see that happen. Um, so could you, could you speak at all to how how this can be used, but not not just turn into a way of just saying, okay, well, I don't, I only want ten, ten, I want all the smaller setbacks. I want private roads. I want to try to try to move away from some of these rules, develop a little bit higher density than this tip zoning we typically have. How do we, how do we keep that, keep a, keep a lid on this such that it's a useful tool without without going too far and allowing too much to replace what we have?
Uh, you, there's, I think there's a few options, and one of them might be the application of applying a range or an average assort that always goes back to the underlying zoning district versus the land use, because the land use is a very broad category. Uh, under House Bill nineteen twenty-three, which council authorized us the grant funding us to go after, uh, one of the code amendments we're looking at is an average lot size. So uh we could utilize perhaps something like that here to ensure that uh in an area that is used at ten thousand square feet lot sizes, that there's a uh opportunity to deviate that a little bit. We don't want two thousand next to eighteen thousand, obviously, but ninety-five hundred next to twelve ta- twelve thousand isn't a bad idea. It it all looks relatively the same from the sidewalk and and operates the same, and again, allows additional flexibility in some of our areas that although there might be six air, uh, six acres of vacant land, not all of that is actually developable, though maybe uh right of way requirements is twenty-five percent right off the bat. Uh, uh, preservation of open space and all that needs to be considered. So I, we could, we could look at some ranges to apply so that we don't necessarily remove, uh, I guess, all of the freedom and flexibility of the PUD, but still allows it with some uh uh measures in place to ensure that uh we can ensure that our community members are happy with what's popping up around them.
I'd really appreciate that, because especially as we look at some of the infill in our um former, our former donut hole, um, there's a, there's a lot of property owners there that have have fair lot sizes and um, and something like this, I I would really hate to see um the equivalent, the 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 functional equivalent of apartments popping up in the middle of uh of uh much um uh lower density residential. Want to make sure that we got a good blend of that. Um, so I I I, some sort of proposal from staff as to what that would look like. Like I said, it's not in there right now, if I understood correctly. I would, I would like to see some sort of, some sort of um ma- matching the character of a neighborhood to to an extent.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had some uh similar uh thoughts as uh Mr. Maloney on that. Uh, and so I I, but I always think it's kind of like a scaled basis on the on on this, on the zoning type. What what uh um uh this specific uh type of uh building, wh- wh- what uh type of zoning would that be allowed on? Or it's, you know, it would just be blanketed or?
It's actually a brand, it's uh, when it goes through, it's actually the creation of a brand new zoning district. So if you were to look at a zoning map for the city of Pasco, uh, Sun Willows and Ivy Glades actually have their own specific zoning district. I think it's PUD, Mr. Roy.
Yes, it is.
For uh creating a PUD, that uh someone would have to request, like a developer who owns land and say, hey, I want to create PUD, come and do a request from the city to rezone to a PUD, is that?
They they come through with a regular application, and then the uh along with uh if it were to be approved, it would be the creation of a new zoning district that is per, basically says this specific area has this zoning designation, nothing else applies.
Based, based on our requests?
Yeah.
We wouldn't prescribe say, hey, I think we, it would be great to do a PUD here and without the knowledge or or desire of the developers. That's what I'm hearing. Yeah, I did. I did have kind of some clarifying questions about that. And then a couple just in the details. Um, did see, uh, I was originally concerned about the loss of open uh space, uh, from thirty-five to fifteen seems pretty drastic, but um, I mean, I don't necessarily know what the right um approaches, and then seeing that in 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 hearing that some are kind of used um s- used as open space, but not really provide amenities for the folks living in there. Uh, but I I did, I did see that there was kind of a listing of some, and it seemed, um, it seemed like perhaps it it could, a little more detail there could could clarify, uh, because it it says maybe uh, there there's kind of a sense of like a little bit ambiguity, may may include the following, and it has has about four examples. And then we have about three things that are not allowed, but just perhaps being a little more clear so that folks know what what would actually be um additional examples. Um, or or perhaps uh saying these are specifically not allowed. Uh, so just, it seems a little fuzzy to me, but um just that was the comment I had. Um, and then the other, I think I could probably, um, yeah, I don't have a huge stake for the others.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. If there's no further questions, Mr. Gonzalez, thank you for your presentation. Uh, great discussion on this. Looking forward to uh to moving forward on this and uh uh put it on next week's agenda for this for this um amendment. Change it. Mr. White? Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. All right, we'll move right along to uh number five on the agenda, miscellaneous council discussion. Anybody have anything they want to share? I know that uh we have two council members that will be going over to Olympia tomorrow. Um, we wish you well and represent us well, and the Zarha would be, uh, the first time you go. Um, I don't know if you've been over there before, but uh as a council member, obviously, it's the first time. So good luck to you and uh, I don't know if you have any questions?
Thank you. No, the only thing I wanted to point out is my name was spelled wrong in the reminders.
Okay.
I'm I'm Zarha, I'm not Zara.
All right. Thank you.
But I'm looking forward to going.
All right, any um thoughts from the staff? No? Mr. Zayal?
I was actually just going to mention what you did. We have uh AWC in the next couple of days, so.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Um, just real quick, I just wanted to mention that um I'm not going up with the same contingent, but I will be going up um um on on Wednesday. I'll be there Thursday as part of the um um the 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 both the leadership trace cities as well as the regional chambers effort for their lobbying session. So I'll be up there with the business community afterwards.
Perfect. All right, thank you. All right, with that said, we uh we are now going to agenda, number six on the agenda, where uh there's executive session. There is a need for executive session. The city council will now meet in executive session. The purpose of the session is to discuss litigation and potential litigation with legal counsel. The executive session is expected to last approximately ten minutes and will be attended by the city manager and city attorney. No actions will be taken during the executive session. At the conclusion, uh, we will convene and the uh reconvene the meeting of the city council, entertaining the action desired by the council, then adjourn the meeting. With that said, uh, we're now in executive session. Thank you. With that said, uh, we're now in executive session. Thank you. Okay, we are now back into session. Um, the executive session is over. If there's no further comments by the council, then this meeting is now adjourned at eight thirteen PM. Thank you.